A public hearing to order. There's a public hearing for the consideration of annexation agreement. Can you hear me? Annexation agreement concerning the property to be known as the Foster Avenue addition to Wooddale, which is approximately thirty-seven point four acres. C one Chicago two LLC, the property owner petitioned the city to annex the property. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderwoman Ames?
Here.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Currielli?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Sismarzki?
Here.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Here.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Here.
Mayor, please.
Here. I declare a quorum present. Notice of this public hearing was published in the Daily Herald newspaper. A copy of the published legal notice will be exhibit A. Notice of this annexation was also served on the supervisor and trustees of Addison Township and the Addison Township Road District Commissioner. The property is legally described in the legal notice. The property bears the current common addresses, which I will read off. Kathy, you probably have a copy of all these addresses.
Yes, I do.
Seventeen West one thirty-four Washington Street. Or seventeen W one one four Washington Street. Seventeen W one zero two Washington Street. Seventeen W zero six eight Washington Street. Seventeen W zero five four Washington Street. Seventeen W zero two two Washington Street. Six N six four zero Pine Street. Six N six two eight Pine Street. Six N six oh nine Pine Street. Seventeen W one two five Washington Street. Seventeen W one zero nine Washington Street. Seventeen W zero eight nine Washington Street. Seventeen W zero three five Washington Street. Seventeen W zero two one Washington Street. Six N five six five Pine Street. Seventeen W one two six Center Street. Seventeen W one one zero Center Street. Seventeen W zero nine zero Center Street. Seventeen W zero seven six Center Street. Seventeen W zero six two Center Street. Seventeen W zero four eight Center Street. Seventeen W zero three four Center Street. Seventeen W zero two two Center Street. Six N five three five Pine Street. Six N five one three Pine Street. Six N four eight five Pine Street. Seventeen W one two one Center Street. Seventeen W one oh nine Center Street. Seventeen W zero eight nine Center Street. Seventeen W zero seven three Center Street. Seventeen W zero six one Center Street. Seventeen W zero four nine Center Street. Seventeen W zero three five Center Street. Seventeen W zero two three Center Street. Seventeen W one two two Hawthorne Avenue. Seventeen W one one zero Hawthorne Avenue. Seventeen W zero eight eight Hawthorne Avenue. Seventeen W oh seven six Hawthorne Avenue. Seventeen W zero six two Hawthorne Avenue. Seventeen W zero five zero Hawthorne Avenue. Six N six oh six Pine Street. Six N five seventy-eight Pine Street. Six N five sixty-six Pine Street. Six N five five zero Pine Street. Six N five four six Pine Street. Six N five two two Pine Street. Six N five one zero Pine Street. Six N four nine zero Pine Street. Six N four seventy-six Pine Street. Seventeen W one seven nine Hawthorne Avenue. Seventeen W one six five Hawthorne Avenue. Seventeen W one four nine Hawthorne Avenue. Seventeen W one three five Hawthorne Avenue. Seventeen W one two three Hawthorne Avenue. Seventeen W one zero nine Hawthorne Avenue. Seventeen W zero eight nine Hawthorne Avenue. Seventeen W one seventy-eight Foster Avenue. Seventeen W one sixty-four Foster Avenue. Seventeen W one three four Foster Avenue. Seventeen W one two zero Foster Avenue. Seventeen W one zero six Foster Avenue and seventeen W zero eight four Foster Avenue. These parcels and cer- certain rights of way which are also to be annexed are all currently located in unincorporated DuPage County. Any individual present tonight who wishes to speak to the proposed annexation agreement and annexation will be provided the opportunity to do so. I will now open the public hearing. Ms. Springer, can you please present background information on the annexation of this property to the city and provide information relative to the annexation agreement before us this evening? Ms. Ms. Springer.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe I need to be sworn.
You just always read the testimony about here should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. Thank you. So this annexation agreement that's being considered tonight is for Bryn Mawr Phase Three, which is the property generally located north of Foster Road, west of Route eighty-three and south of Washington Street. The petitioner is C one Chicago two LLC, and it covers the property that is currently unincorporated and comprises about thirty-eight acres within that boundary I just described. The petitioner has filed the necessary petitions and all of the required notices have been provided, as was mentioned in opening the public hearing. The agreement itself covers what happens after annexation. There are ordinances and resolutions that are required to be adopted, including the approval of the subdivision plat, the vacations of right-of-ways within the territory, and rezoning the property from what it comes in as is our residential estate to our industrial classification, which is I one. There are three buildings proposed within this land area, and they are required to be completed no later than December thirty-first of thirty thirty-one. They are required to pay all of our standard fees, and the agreement itself has a term of fifteen years. I think that comprises generally the points of the annexation agreement, and that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Springer? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment concerning the proposed annexation agreement and annexation of the property? I know you gave me a card, so this, okay. Mr. Matuski. Oh, you have to be sworn in, I'm sorry.
Could you just raise your right hand, please? You just always read the testimony about here should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. Go ahead.
My name is Thomas Milewski. I live at seventeen W zero six one Washington Street. I'm here to reiterate some facts about seven of our properties that are still not purchased by Cyrus One. There was this plan that provided the halls in annexation for our properties, and I guess there was a plan of building around us, buildings south from us and north from us. Fortunately, Cyrus One understood that that's not doable, that's way too close, nobody does that. In all the cities around, Itasca, Allegro Village, Bensonville, always made clear to developers that when they buy area and try to build on it, they have to buy everybody out from that area. So that was problem number one. The problem number two is building very powerful data centers very close to our properties. This project is very strongly opposed by us with us in there. Fortunately, we came to agreement with Cyrus One, and we signed a week ago contracts to sell our properties to Cyrus One, and those contracts have May first closing dates. If for any reason that would not happen, we would come back and oppose any project so close to us. Hopefully, it will happen on May first, and we are all gonna be out of the neighborhood till before the middle of July. Those things are very powerful and probably quite noisy. They cannot be built within hundred feet from my house. However, hopefully, I'm gonna be out in June, and the project can begin. So, that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have one other card. Not on this, okay. Okay, anyone else? Okay, there being no further public comment, I will now entertain a motion to close this public hearing. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Jacob motion. Alderman, Alderwoman Ames, second. There be an emotion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarzki?
No.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Uh, yes.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
Mayor, please.
Yes. Okay, the motion is carried, the public hearing is closed. The council will now commence deliberations under ordinance authorizing the entry into the annexation agreement and to annex this property later in this meeting. All right, we did, we did the motion, okay. All right, city council meeting, roll call, please. I'm sorry, Kathy. Roll call, please.
Alderwoman Ames, here. Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
I'm sorry, Alderman Currielli?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Sismarzki?
Here.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Here.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Here.
Mayor, please.
Here. Declare a quorum, please stand and join the pledge of allegiance.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, I need a motion to approve the minutes of March seventh, twenty twenty-four.
The move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. Second, any comments, questions, or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Okay, next, communications. Is this?
Yeah.
Good.
My name's Eugene Wilson, I live at four seventy-one Itasca Street. I'm here to address what's been going on at the high school in Bensonville, which part of our children in Wooddale go to. It has been very nerve-wracking going those meetings. I am here tonight asking the mayor and the council members to address the letter to District one hundred and asking for the resignation of a superintendent over at Fenton High School. We need to put this to rest and help our community mend this back together. These two communities are tearing apart, and I understand we got three school districts. I wouldn't be sitting up here if it wasn't any other school district, I would be doing, asking the same thing. We have Addison Trail, we have Lake Park. If it was that way, I would be here saying that too. But it's time to put our community back together and try to solve this issue. Right now, both towns are tearing apart, and the kids are not getting a good education over there due to the fact that this is going on. So I'm asking, please, send a letter asking for superintendent to resign. Next town already did it, I think we should follow steps. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments this evening? Okay. Nothing under mayor's report, Mr. Murmas, mayor's report.
Sure, three quick items tonight. Prairie Fest sponsorships have gone out, and happy to announce Prairie Fest sponsorships are coming in ahead of pace from last year. Right now, we have a total of thirty-one thousand dollars raised in total. Last year, we had about fifty, so we're well on pace to eclipse that, so that's good news. So thanks to everyone for their hard work with that. And also wanted to remind residents of two key dates. Monday, April first, the city yard waste collection resumes, and on the week of April eighth, there is a brush collection pickup that will start for the spring. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We have one item under the consent agenda this evening. I'll need a motion to approve resolution authorizing the execution of a multi-year contract between the City of Wooddale and Schumann Printers Incorporated for newsletter design and printing services.
Aye. Second.
Who made the, is that you?
Yes.
And Alderman Sismarzki, second, okay. Okay, so we have motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, committee chairman reports, planning, zoning, Alderman Catalano. Yes, I have eight, Mayor. The first one, an ordinance approving and causing publication of the City of Wooddale two thousand and twenty-four official zoning map, that is my motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions on this one? It's to a roll call.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Okay, next is an ordinance approving the plan of subdivision for re-subdivision or consolidation of property located at the west of Illinois Route eighty-three, Bussy Road, between Bryn Mawr Avenue and north and Washington Street to the south. Wooddale, Illinois, Bryn Mawr Phase Two, that is my motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Questions on this? Alderman Woods, Hartwood.
Yeah, thank you. So the properties that weren't purchased, will these be attached to this Phase Two piece when the purchase actually goes through? Or it'll be part of, I think they were on this side of Washington or?
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, those will be, come back for when they're added. Once those are added, we'll come back to.
But would they be added to Phase Two or Phase Three?
Defer to Phase Two.
Phase Two, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarzki?
No.
Alderman Woods, Hartwoods?
No.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
No.
Call me.
Mayor, please.
Yes. That passes. Next is an ordinance granting special use permit for a planned unit development, a special use for major utilities and public service facilities, and approving of the site plan for the two data centers building and the comm ed substation located to the west of Illinois Route eighty-three, Bussy Road, between Bryn Mawr Avenue and north and Washington Street to the south of Bryn Mawr Phase Two, that is my motion.
Second.
Any questions on this? Alderman Hartwood.
So on the, what is it, the plan of subdivision, this should've been on the last question, but in, on page three, where it speaks to maintaining the, the temporary detention in there, that's good, but there's no language to talk about maintaining the permanent detention. So we know that there's two detention bonds in there, one's permanent, one's temporary one, but this only speaks to them legally having to maintain the temporary one, which we know is gonna disappear Phase Two, Phase Two. Does that need to be added in there to?
Ms. Springer, go ahead.
So code requires them to maintain the permanent detention basis, so if they don't do that, we can go after them with code enforcement, but it's not necessary to be in the plat because it's required by code.
Why would we?
Go ahead, follow up.
Why would we put the temporary one in there?
Ms. Springer?
We don't need it for a permanent one, why would we write this in here for a temporary?
Mr. Bond? Go ahead, Mr. Bond.
My understanding for the location, it's gonna remain in that same location, is my understanding right?
Ms. Springer or somebody from Cyrus? We know that answer? No, he's got a, he's got a story.
Hi, my name is Payne, from Bowman Consulting, civil engineer. Actually, worked on the detention facilities. So there is, and you were totally correct, there's temporary and a permanent one. Both will be required to provide detention, and both will be part of the maintenance. So once the temporary, kind of like, we're done with the temporary and we're switching over to the permanent, then maintenance will compare to the permanent conditions.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Are we constructing both of these at the same time, or the temporary one only exists until you do the, that's not the way I read it or the documents anyway.
Go ahead, sir.
So the temporary will actually be in place during building one, and then once building two comes in, we expand basically to convert the temporary into the permanent condition, and then we'll extend the parking lot, and at that time, the temporary will go away. And then the permanent detention will provide detention for both.
You have a follow up?
Follow up, staff or legal, so then that line will be attached? That note that they're responsible for taking care of it, and if they don't, we have the right to enter, you know, it's a standard.
Ms. Springer?
That's all I'm asking.
Yes, so they do have to come back for final approvals for Phase Two, and that's when it will be included at that time, because that's when the permanent detention will be constructed.
Okay.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Excuse me, Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarzki?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Uh, yes.
Alderman Hardy Woods?
Yes.
Mayor, please.
Yes, that passes. Next is a resolution authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement for the property commonly known as the Foster Avenue addition to Wooddale to the City of Wooddale, Illinois, Code six zero one nine one, Bryn Mawr Phase Three, that is my motion.
Second.
Alderman Messina, a second. Questions, Alderman Woods?
Okay, this one, questions on, to some issues, and I, I thank staff for giving me the information, and I thank Cyrus for stepping up and doing this stuff, but my, and I believe that you're gonna follow everything that you said. My concern is that looking at the limits that are allowed for Class A property, that's the residential property, and then looking at the octave band, and knowing what I, I know probably just enough to be dangerous about sound when working at the airport, but those low ranges are what the concern is, and I don't want to say that that's the issue that was at other places, but that lower bandwidth that's harder to stop and travels further, is my understanding, that's the concern, and I don't know that that's captured so much by the rules or the regulations, the governing bodies that we speak to that we're gonna comply with. So I guess my concern is that we comply with what the rule is, but the rule doesn't eliminate the potential issue of that lower tone constant hum. Can anybody speak for that, or?
Ms. Springer, go ahead, or Mr. Bond? Go ahead.
I was just gonna mention that our ability to enforce regulations, the regulations have to be in effect, and so we don't have anything in our code, or if there's none in the I E P A code, then we couldn't just, you know, decide to regulate something that there's no code for.
But they have to follow I E P A standards?
Yes.
So isn't that a code?
Yes, my point is, is I believe Alderman Woods is talking about a band of sound that is not covered by the regulations. They will have to comply with I E P A standards and the local standards for sound, but if what he's asking about is not covered in those regulations, we, you know, we don't have the ability to enforce it.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, so she, Ms. Springer did correctly characterize my concern. Thank you. And so I would, that, so the concern is just that, and I concur with Ms. Springer that, you know, they're following the rule. I guess where I diverge from that is, I would argue that we have the right to make rules, and if it's a known concern or potential concern, why we couldn't address that? So these are, you know, prevalent in windmills and things like that, right? So when you get into sound, there's wind, there's pressure, there's volume, there's all these things, which I'm not smart enough to cover all of them. I just know that this is an issue, and as we get that lower band, that's potentially an issue, and there is residential about a thousand feet away. So will it affect it? I don't know, but I don't have the ability to address it later. This is my only recourse, is to address it here. So I'm only one, one person, one vote, I don't know if there's any way to address that or speak to that, and we imagine on Cyrus's one, Cyrus's side, that, you know, they'll say that they can't address something that they don't know or exceeds the code, but I'm just fearful that, especially as building two, three, four, five gets built, and those things build up, that will, it will become an issue.
Alderman Messina, you had your hand up?
Yes, I do. I guess I'm surprised. I guess I'll quote, a known concern, why can't we address that? One, residential a thousand feet away, right? So there's a concern being raised by a fellow councilman about potential dangers and issues pertaining being raised by a fellow councilman about potential dangers and issues pertaining to data centers on Route eighty-three. They gotta comply with local and I E P A standards. Great. However, the same councilman complaining about a potential noise nuisance voted against blocking off a street just less than a mile from there that led to a vehicle driving straight through a house at eighty miles an hour.
Wait, that's enough, that's enough.
But why the sudden interest for life safety issues? Suddenly, noise is more important than people's lives?
That's enough, got it. We understand this. We're not gonna do.
And so is my kid's life, a car driving through our house.
Yeah, but I gotta live with that noise. I live right across the street and I don't want that. I am very.
All right, it's enough. One out of ten. Alderman Woods, unless you have something other than rebutting that statement, go ahead.
I will not touch.
Okay, go ahead.
That subject?
Okay.
But I, but I will ask everybody up here, now it's easy to dismiss it because the building isn't next to your house.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, if that building was moved down Route eighty-three, the third avenue, there'd be more complaints. You have rest.
Any other questions? Alderman Jacob?
Well, today, one of our fellow aldermen did drive by a couple of these centers and there was no noise, so I really don't see what the big issue is. And you have, and you have airplanes, you have airplane noise every single day.
That's enough. That's enough. Do we have anything, any questions? All right, roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
No.
Alderman Hartwoods?
No.
Alderman Hardywoods?
No.
Mayor, please.
Here comes the final say.
Yes.
That passes.
Next is an ordinance annexing property commonly, commonly known as Foster Avenue addition to Wooddale to the city of Wooddale, Illinois, zip code six oh one nine one, Bryn Mawr, Phase Three. That is my motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions on this one? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
No.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Hardywoods?
Yes.
Yes, that passes.
Next is an ordinance vacate in Pine Avenue, Center Street, and a portion of Hawthorne Avenue and a portion of Washington Street in the city of Wooddale, Illinois, zip code six zero one nine one, Bryn Mawr, Phase Three. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions on this? Roll call.
Alderman Catali- excuse me, Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Hardywoods?
Yes.
Mayor, please.
Yes, that passes.
Next is an ordinance rezoning land from R one Estates Residential, R three Single Family District two I one Industrial Business Park in an area generally located along Route, um, Illinois Route eighty-three, Bussy Road, between Washington Street to the north and Foster Avenue to the south, Bryn Mawr, Phase Three. That is my motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Questions on this one? Alderman Woods?
On the vacation of these streets, some of the streets, the, the residents that haven't completed their contract or purchase are still living there. I'm assuming that nobody's gonna tear off the street before that's.
Mr. Brandt?
No, they would not. And they'll be added to the next round for the vacation.
Okay.
Once that's added.
All right. Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman, uh, Sismarski?
No.
Alderman Woods?
No.
Alderman Hardywoods?
No.
And me.
Mayor, please.
Yes. That passes.
And last is a resolution approving the primary plat of subdivision to consolidate lots for property commonly known as Foster Avenue addition to Wooddale, Wooddale, Illinois, zip code six zero one nine one, Bryn Mawr, Phase Three. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
No.
Alderman Hartwoods?
No.
Alderman Hardywoods?
No.
Mayor, please.
Yes. That passes.
And that's the end of my report.
Okay, next, public health and safety. Alderman Currielli, no report, mayor. Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Jacob?
Uh, one report, mayor. Approval of a proposal from J X Truck Center for the replacement of Public Works vehicle number five sixty-nine in an amount not to exceed two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. That is my motion.
Sergeant.
Motion is second. Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Hardywoods?
Yes.
Mayor, please.
Yes, and that passes. That concludes your report?
That concludes my report, mayor.
Thank you. Finance Administration, Alderman Ames?
No report, mayor.
Thank you. Nothing under other business this evening. Approval of list of bills, Alderman Ames?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the list of bills for March twenty-first, twenty twenty-four in the amount of one million, two hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and sixty cents. That is my motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Questions? Alderman Hardywoods?
Uh, Director Wilson, the forty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollar and sixty-four cent interest payment, um, what time period is that for?
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, that would be for the month of February.
Okay. And do you know?
Go ahead, follow up.
To date, how much we've paid in interest on the eight million dollars we borrowed?
Go ahead. Mr. Wilson?
Uh, not an exact figure, but it would be roughly a hundred and twenty thousand.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman Hartwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Hardywoods?
Yes.
And that passes.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. We have no evidence to be referred. Nothing for executive session. Need a motion to adjourn?
The move.
Second.
All in favor?